This is NHTV Two, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December Board of Selectment Meeting. I'm Mike Frida, North Haven's First Selectman, joined by Mr. William Piper, our Second Selectman, and Ms. Sally Boehme, our Third Selectwoman. I'd like to take this opportunity to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a happy Hanukkah, a very happy and healthy holiday season, and, of course, a great New Year. This is our last meeting of the year, believe it or not, 2023. So with that being said, I'd like to ask everyone to stand for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, worthy and just as for all. Sally?
Yes, before we go on with our agenda, I just wanted to say something. I got a phone call today from a citizen that I've spoken with many times throughout the past 10 years, Mr. Lillo, Neil Lillo. He's 92 years old and a veteran, and he's aware of my interest in veterans' affairs and military history, and he asked me to just acknowledge that today is the 82nd anniversary of the bombing of Pearl Harbor. So I wanted to do that. It was very important to Mr. Lillo that people remember important military events like that. And I just wanted to tell a really quick story about this gentleman. He's 92, so he was 10 years old the day Pearl Harbor was bombed, and I said, "What do you remember?" And he said, "Well..." He and his family, it was Sunday afternoon, and they were sitting around listening to the radio, as they always did after having Sunday dinner, and this program was interrupted with the announcement of the bombing of Pearl Harbor, and all of the adults were, "Well, where's that?" And he said, "You know, we were Fairhaven people. If it wasn't on Grand Avenue, we didn't know where it was." But they quickly learned exactly where Pearl Harbor was. But then he said, "Fast forward 10 years after I graduated from high school." He served in the Navy in the Korean War, and his ship was leaving San Francisco to head east, and it stopped in Pearl Harbor to refuel and to resupply. And there he was, 10 years later, his ship passing the Arizona, which is underwater there, it's still there today if you go there. And he said that it came over. The loudspeaker on his ship that all hands at the rail to salute the Arizona. And he said, and he thought about himself as a little kid 10 years earlier, not knowing where Pearl Harbor was, and there he was, a grown man saluting the Arizona. So I wanted to share that story and just mention that this is Pearl Harbor Day. And thank you, Mr. Lillo, for calling and asking that we reflect. Bill, you're also a military historian, like me?
Yeah, I've been to Pearl Harbor as well, and it's very memorable. And I also spent a couple months at Schofield Barracks back in 1972, which is on the northern side of the Army, where the Army is located on Pearl Harbor. And actually, through the, if my memory is correct, through the pass on the northern side of the island is where the Japanese bombers flew through over the top of Schofield Barracks on their way to hit the ships and airfields at Pearl Harbor. So, you know, if anybody does, I know everybody goes to Hawaii for a lot of reasons in terms of how beautiful it is and the beaches, but if you are going to be in Oahu, you should spend some time and visit Pearl Harbor. I think, as Nancy and this gentleman were pointing out, it's very hallowed ground, you know, just like, you know, the other place that comes to mind is Gettysburg, having been there many times myself. So it definitely, so it's really nice that, you know, we're having our meeting and that, you know, you brought up the remembrance of what the importance of today's date. Thank you.
Yes.
So thank you, Neil. He's been a man that has always written letters, calls, calling Sally. I think we missed your call today, too. If we did, we're sorry. We have a staff outage today. But I want to just say, Neil, 92 years old, right?
That's right.
I think he knew your father, you said, right?
Yes. Well, they were, yeah.
So Neil and Angie, if you're watching, too, that's his lovely wife, Angie, and their wonderful daughter Denise, we thank you. We thank you for your service. We thank you for your years here as a North Haven resident. And I've often said to Neil that if someone presented a contract to me and said, "Mike, you could be like Mr. Neil Lillo at 92 years old, but you've got to sign on this bottom line," I would sign immediately to be like that man, filled with energy, filled with charisma and personality. He's a wonderful, wonderful human being. So thank you, Sally.
Yes, and he loves to write letters. He's from the old school when letter writing was an art. I have a little folder of letters from him.
And cursive, cursive writing.
Yes, very beautiful letters. So we're to item two.
Okay, any public comment to the agenda? Item three, the appointment of Sally Boehme, 5 Blossom Drive, as a Secretary to the Board of Selectment. I'll make a motion to accept that.
I will second that motion.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion?
I'll recuse myself.
All right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm overwhelmed.
Okay.
Yet again.
All right. Number four, the approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectment meeting from November 2, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second Sally's motion to approve.
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're going to dispense with number five because we're going to move into this resolution, and we have a lot of work to do tonight, ladies and gentlemen, on boards and commissions. So who'd like to read the resolution?
Why doesn't Bill do six?
Okay.
I'll take seven.
Good.
Item six of the agenda is to consider and act upon the following resolution regarding filing of an application by the town of North Haven to the state for $534,391 in order to undertake the design and construction of the fire department multi-bay apparatus garage and to execute an assistance agreement. Item number seven then takes us into the first whereas, whereas pursuant to Chapter 528 of the Connecticut General Statutes...
Well, first, Bill, I think we have to talk about six.
Oh, okay. I think that's a good idea. I was going to do that after the whereas.
And I'll do the resolutions on seven. So, Michael, did you want to, since we're, take care of six?
This is a steep grant that we received from the state of Connecticut. That's what this is. This is a grant that we applied for through Lynn Sadowski. So that's what this is about.
This is small-town economic assistance program.
Right.
Yes, so this, so we're doing this construction if and only if we get this grant. Is that my understanding?
That's what this is about, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We're always, we always love getting grants, so. I will read the resolution. Whereas pursuant to Chapter 528 of the Connecticut General Statutes, the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection is authorized to extend financial assistance for public safety projects, and whereas it is desirable and in the public interest that the town of North Haven make an application to the state for $534,391 in order to undertake the design and construction of the fire department multi-bay apparatus garage and to execute an assistance agreement. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Selectment of the town of North Haven, one, that the applicant, town of North Haven, is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for state assistance imposed by the assistance agreement and the applicable Connecticut General Statutes; two, that the filing of an application by the town of North Haven in an amount not to exceed $534,391 is hereby approved, and that Michael J. Frida, the applicant's First Selectman, is hereby authorized and directed to execute and file such application with the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection to provide such additional information to execute other documents as may be required to execute an assistance agreement with the state of Connecticut for state financial assistance if such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, revisions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the town of North Haven. I will move that resolution as read.
Is there a second?
A second? Sally's resolution?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
So now, Bill and Sally, I'm turning this over to you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, under next item, agenda item is resignations and appointments. I'll motion for the correction of a clerical error regarding the appointment of Jennifer Caldwell, 69 Kimberley Circle, to the Commission on Aging to fill the unexpired term of Joseph Vilano, term to expire December 31st, and the correct ending date is 2025.
Great. It was, we did this last month, and it was 2023 in error, so I will second that correction.
Okay, end of discussion. Like Sally said, we did do this last month, so all those in favor?
Aye.
I will move to accept the resignation of Richard Werner, 15 Elliott Court, from the Water Pollution Control Authority, term to expire December 31st, 2025.
Is there a second?
I'll second Richard's resignation.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. In the discussion, just want to thank Richard. He's been chairman of the WPCA for probably 30 years, and has experienced some health issues, so he submitted his resignation. We thank him for his many, many years of service. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll move to accept the resignation of Rodrick Ryan Williams, 20 Lancelot Drive, as an alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission, term to expire November 30th, 2025.
I'll second that motion for, to accept his, Rodrick's resignation.
So we have a motion and a second. In the discussion, you're going to see Rodrick come back. I was at the Planning and Zoning meeting the other night, reorganizing the chairman, vice chair, and secretary, so the resignation will soon turn into the next item coming up. All those in favor?
Aye. Next item, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Robert Brancato, 1953 Whitney Avenue, from the Board of Ethics, term to expire December 31st, 2025.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I will move for the appointment of Karen Hearn, 23 George Street, to the Zoning Board of Appeals to fill the unexpired term of Joseph Vilano, term to expire November 30th, 2025.
I'll second Karen's appointment.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I think Karen's here this evening.
Yeah.
So all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, I'll make a motion to, for the appointment of Rodrick Ryan Williams, 20 Lancelot Drive, to the Planning and Zoning Commission, to fill the unexpired term of Teresa Ranciado Vili, term to expire November 30th, 2025.
Second.
All right, motion, second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And as I said last time, thank you, Teresa, for your service.
On the next matter, I wanted to make a motion to table this appointment for one month, and let me explain briefly why. You heard us do an appointment for Mr. Hearn and Mr., for Rod Williams, and both of those appointments went before the North Haven Democratic Downtown Committee, the DTC, and were both unanimously endorsed for appointment. This is, as you can see on this agenda, there's many, many reappointments, and the custom has always been with reappointments. They pretty much are automatic. I mean, you determine that people want to be reappointed, so there's never any issue about needing approvals. If people who are serving want to continue serving, we reappoint them with gratitude. But this is a new appointment. It's not filling a vacancy as the other two were, and so I think the DTC would like the opportunity to vote on this matter and to see if anyone else would be interested. My feeling is that most likely she will be endorsed next month by the DTC, but the process is important, and we had the process of being given the opportunity to review appointments for the other two, and I just feel we should be given the opportunity to treat this the same way. I reviewed Dot Logan's resume. She's certainly qualified for the position. This motion to table, I want to make it very clear, is in no way any reflection of any doubts of her abilities to perform on this board, but I just believe in the proper process, and so I would like to make a motion to table this for one month.
So before we get into the discussion, well, actually, procedurally, you made a motion.
Yes.
Do you want a second motion? Because we're following the process, but I'll explain that in the discussion.
Oh, okay.
Let me jump into this, okay?
Sure, sure.
Let me handle this, Bill, please, okay? Because this is a situation where we don't want the town committees to appoint the Ethics Commission, because in the Ethics Ordinance, the Ethics Commission Ordinance, just as the one you're going to see who's listed as an R, who isn't endorsed by the RTC, we don't want that, because in the ordinance it says you can't be a member of each party. So the appearance of...
Or town committee.
Of each, or a town committee. So the appearance of having a party endorse an Ethics Commission candidate is not the right procedure. This is the one board where we don't need either the RTC or DTC, because the procedure is we don't want them involved with this. We need a neutral board, and we're having a tough time on the Ethics Commission. We have vacancies. This fills a vacancy.
Yeah. I don't know...
And based on your comments, though, that you think she's qualified, why should we not appoint her tonight?
Well, because someone else may be interested. I don't know.
But she's already expressed interest.
Is Dot Logan a member of the DTC? I don't think so. She's not.
And she would not have been nominated here if she was a member of the DTC, just like Mr. Palmer is not a member of the RTC. We don't want members of the Ethics Commission even remotely affiliated with the town committees. That's the process. It's the right process.
See, and that's why...
I really wasn't being negative or anything about this. I'm not being argumentative about it. I just was surprised to see it because I hadn't heard about it in advance, and normally with new appointments, that's why I was making the distinction between new appointments and reappointments, which are never an issue. That's why I made that reference. But this is a new appointment, and so normally I would have heard about it first, so that's why I asked for it to be tabled, because it was a surprise to me. But I do understand that certainly they could be a member of a party and be on Board of Ethics.
Just not a town committee.
Just not a town. They can't be an elected official, and technically, a town committee member, Republican or Democrat, is an elected official. So yes, that's, I understand that, but... So you're saying it shouldn't go through the Democratic or Republican town committees?
Absolutely not.
Which is why I was reluctant to make a motion to table it.
Right. So let me further explain.
Or to second a motion to table it.
Let me further explain this. So originally, we had all unaffiliates on this commission, which would have been, that's a non-biased view. So now we lost unaffiliates, so we're trying to create here having an Ethics Commission fully staffed, which we don't have right now. So if you see a member of this commission who is a Republican, then you're going to see someone who's a Democrat, but not recommended by the town committees, and the balance of them will be unaffiliates. So I really have always wanted five unaffiliates on this commission.
Okay.
So we, that's the reason. They're not endorsed positions by the political town committees.
The, right, it says the board shall, I have the, I have it here. The board shall consist of five members plus two alternate members. I know we've had some vacancies on this for a while, and, you know, all of the appointments that we've done have always been reappointments. So again, this is new in that it is not a reappointment of someone existing. It's a new appointment, so that's...
Both are new.
Both are new, okay.
And I think that's a good, this is a good process to further...
So Mr. Palmer was not approved by the RTC?
No. And I think this is a good process to, you know, to put into place that it actually be, just as the statute requires, that it be completely separate and independent, and yet there's nothing that would even, I think, require that we not have today be appointing two Democrats if we believe that they were, you know, responsible, ethical people who would be willing to serve, so.
Right.
So this really should be as, maybe as apolitical an appointment as any.
Yes, there's, there's some...
This is a good, I think, a good way to handle it.
There's language in here to that effect, that they want to limit Ds and Rs even though they're allowed.
Yeah, ideally, it's five unaffiliates.
Any affluence from the respective town committees.
Okay.
So I can tell you that Mr. Palmer, the RTC doesn't even know him.
I don't know who he is.
Okay, so Ms. Logan just presented her name, but she contacted your office?
Yeah, so, yes. Actually, both are very similar. Both saw me at different places on different times and said they'd like to get involved with the government. Valerie and I just had a discussion about the fact that we have all these vacancies on this commission. So we asked them to send resumes, and which they did, and then when Valerie and I discussed, well, we have no one else, we have two people want to step up to join something, we called both of them and asked them if they wanted to be part of that, and they both said they'd like to be part of that. They asked what it was about, because they have no idea what it's about, so that's why both were presented here tonight.
Okay.
It's important to have that board staffed only because if something does arise, to scramble, to try to put a board together if there's an issue that gets submitted, an ethics complaint, then we're kind of...
Plus, I have to go in January without a, I have by, obligation by town charter to reorganize all these boards and commissions.
Right. I know you have to do that.
And we lost the chairman because he, his term exceeded the, you can only serve two consecutive three-year terms, so he couldn't be reappointed, so we lost another person. So we were really...
There's sunsets on these appointments. So this is why we have all these vacancies, because a lot of these have sunsetted, in fact...
So she would only be able to serve two terms anyway, as same as Mr. Palmer.
Yeah, the same thing, right.
Two terms, and then they're done.
I understand. Okay, well, I, as I said, I did read through the ordinance, you know, in anticipation, you know, I always try to prepare, and I didn't see anything specifically in here about them not coming, you know, through the political parties, either the DTC or RTC, but I do understand your point because the commission language in very many provisions is just filled with the necessity for being, for impartiality, and that's the key.
Yeah, that's the key.
That's the key. You want people of great character that are impartial. I just thought that because it was, I want you to understand why I thought this argument, because it was a new appointment that I had not heard of at all.
We understand some.
Yeah, but I think that your explanation is reasonable, so I will withdraw my motion to table, and as I said, I reviewed Ms. Logan's resume, and that's why I emphasized in the beginning, I was never doubting her qualifications or abilities. It was more of a process rather than an issue about character or eligibility to serve. But I understand your position, and I take you what you're saying about the Republican nominee that came in the same way, so that makes me feel better about it. So I'll withdraw, and I will make a motion for the appointment of Dorothy Logan, 2065 Hartford Turnpike, to the Board of Ethics for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2026.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second Dorothy's appointment.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And thank you for allowing me to express my initial concerns.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, Bill, your turn.
See, and I think over time, too, Sally, like, as long as I've been involved, and I think it's probably even true as long as you've been involved, is that even though our resignation, our appointments and everything lists whether somebody's a Democrat, Republican, or unaffiliated, the other thing, too, is I think they're willing to serve, you know, in all these different commissions and obligations that we have as a town, and we've never indicated what their party is when we've read the, you know, I mean, it's for our own benefit to know maybe that's the case, but I think it's in many respects irrelevant because we're glad that everybody that we're talking about today is willing to do their part maybe or small part to help the town out, so...
Right. It was never about that. It was always just about a process. So I agree with you, and if we have any other vacancies, I would encourage people to seek out a position.
Hopefully, they won't have anything to even act on.
Oh, ethics, well, they never have as long as I've been involved in this government.
Now, to this point, before we move on...
Yeah.
We're going to be coming to you or Mrs. Caldwell with some alternates on wetlands. I think there's an opening on wetlands for the party affiliation of the D.
Okay.
So that's totally different than this. I think we've explained it and talked it through.
Yeah.
But Val, I think there's one or two alternates there, right?
Yes.
So we'll be coming to you for your suggestions, okay?
Okay.
I want to get this all settled, Val.
That's what I'm used to.
We'll have a better picture of what's left.
That's the process that I'm used to. Thank you. So, Bill, you have Mr. Palmer?
I will, and I'll make a motion for the appointment of Vincenzo Palmer, 34 Oakwood Drive, to the Board of Ethics for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2026.
Second.
All right, motion, second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'll move for the appointment of Luigi Lou Capola, 27 Maple Avenue, to the Building Board of Appeals for a five-year term to expire December 31st, 2028.
I'll second his appointment.
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Frances Fran Bartlett, 216 Quinnipiac Avenue, number 210 to the Commission on Aging, for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and Fran's a remarkable senior citizen, so thank you, Fran. All those in favor?
Aye. I will make a motion for the reappointment of Deacon Ronnie Bignell, 12 Patton Road, to the Commission on Aging, for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2026.
I'll second Deacon's reappointment.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Kimberly Yates Carew, 55 Mansfield Road, to the Commission on Aging, for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2026.
Second.
All right, motion, second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I will make a motion for the reappointment of Donna Levine, 23 LaGrande Road, to the Commission on Aging, for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2026.
I'll second Donna's reappointment.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll motion the reappointment of Heidi A. Butker, 45 Beach Street, to the Blight Prevention Appeals Board, for a two-year term to expire December 31st, 2025.
Second.
All right, motion, second. Any other discussion?
Hope I said Heidi's name correctly.
Butker, that's close enough.
Butcher, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Heidi.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Lynn Frederickson, 95 Poole Road, to the Blight... Blight Prevention Appeals Board, for a two-year term to expire December 31st, 2025.
I'll second Lynn's reappointment.
All right, a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Stephen M. Miller, 11 St. John Street, Unit D-10, to the Blight Prevention Appeals Board, for a two-year term to expire December 31st, 2025.
Second.
All right, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Peter J. Criscola, 54 Fieldstone Court, to the Building Board of Appeals, for a five-year term to expire December 31st, 2028.
I'll second Pete's reappointment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The, uh, next one is the motion to, I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Michael J. Frida, 90 Highland Park Road, to the Seminary Commission, for a two-year term to expire November 30th, 2025.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a se-, well, motion and a second. I'll recuse myself, any other discussion?
There are none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain, okay. Next.
I will make a motion for the reappointment of Donna Malley, 18 Algonquin Drive, to the Community Services Commission, for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2026.
I'll second her reappointment.
All right, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is a motion for the reappointment of Michael Nappi, 315 Skiff Street, to the Community Services Commission, for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2026.
All right, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Stephen Fontana, 23 Angel Place, to the Economic Development Commission, for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2026.
I'll second Steve's reappointment.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Walter Mann, 7 Benedict Drive, to the Economic Development Commission, for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2026.
Second.
All right, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Robin Clark, 75 Hartley Street, to the Board of Ethics, for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2026.
I'll second Robin's reappointment.
All right, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Nancy Letty, 21 West Winchester Drive, to the Housing Authority, for a five-year term to expire December 31st, 2028.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Anna Garston, 225 Milbrook Road, to the Inland Wetlands Commission, for a four-year term to expire December 31st, 2027.
I'll second Anna's reappointment.
Motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Cheryl Angenuick, 101 Knollwood Road, to the Inland Wetlands Commission, for a four-year term to expire December 31st, 2027.
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Stephen M. Miller, 11 St. John Street, Unit D-10, on the Inland Wetlands Commission, for a four-year term to expire December 31st, 2027.
I'll second Stephen's reappointment.
All right, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion for the reappointment of John R. Whitcomb, 2 North Hill Road, to the Inland Wetlands Commission, for a four-year term to expire December 31st, 2027.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Robert Kowalski, 5 Wilson Avenue, to the Parks and Recreation Commission, for a four-year term to expire December 31st, 2027.
I'll second that reappointment.
All right, motion and a second for Mr. Kowalski, so I know it's a tough name to pronounce.
It is.
So, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I'll, I'll motion now for the reappointment of Christopher Pagan, 14 Pleasant Drive, to the Parks and Recreation Commission, for a four-year term to expire December 31st, 2027.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Mary Lou Stamp, 134 Middletown Avenue, to the Parks and Recreation Commission, for a four-year term to expire December 31st, 2027.
I'll second Mary Lou's reappointment.
All right, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll recuse myself, next.
Next is, I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Michael J. Frida, 90 Highland Park Road, to the Water Pollution Control Authority, for a two-year term to expire November 30th, 2025.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
I will make a motion for the reappointment of David Carney, 56 Hayward Road, Hampden, Connecticut, as the Animal Control Officer, for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2024.
I'll second David's reappointment.
All right, motion second, any other discussion?
I think David does a great job.
He's an outstanding employee, David Carney.
Yes, he is. It's a tough job.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
We thank him for being, for doing his job. It's important. And then along the same lines, I'll motion for the reappointment of Crystal Rochbaugh, 76 Clinton Street, um, sorry, 76 Clifton Street, Wallingford, Connecticut, as the Assistant Animal Control Officer, for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is another outstanding employee, Crystal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're recusing. I will make a motion for the reappointment, again, of Michael J. Frida, 90 Highland, Highland Park Road, to the Volunteer Fire Department Benevolent Association Board of Governors, for a two-year term to expire November 30th, 2025.
I'll second Michael's reappointment.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just make a point just for the public, okay? When you see my name here, ladies and gentlemen, there are certain rules and regulations in the government charter provisions that require the first selectmen to be part of the boards that you just mentioned. And that's why my name is being brought forward.
Yeah, I didn't mean to joke. That's absolutely true. In fact, on the ones that you're being appointed to, some of them you have voting rights to-
Yes.
-in your capacity as, as first selectmen, so.
And E-
I shouldn't have joked. It's very serious that you'd be-
No, it is.
You're actually an ex officio member of every board and commission-
Every board, right.
But you have voting privileges on about four or five, so I understand that, so. I'm, I was just teasing you a little bit, Michael. It's the end of the year.
Believe me, I would prefer, if I could, to have other residents get involved with these commissions, but because I've already, already, already doing this and the Economic Development Director, so I already have two jobs. So I, I would prefer it the other way, to get more people involved, but as we said-
The charter, the charter puts you in these positions and often as a voting member, so it's very important that we do this, so.
And I don't think anybody thinks that you don't have enough to do, so. So, but thank you, Michael, for your service on all these other boards, even if, even if, because it really, it really is an important part of what you do. Next is, I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Donald F. Clark, 32 North Hill Road, to the Volunteer Fire Department Benevolent Association Board of Governors, for a two-year term to expire November 30th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Motion for the reappointment of Pasquale Nazalillo, 7 Mansfield Road, to the Volunteer Fire Department Benevolent Association Board of Governors, for a two-year term to expire November 30th, 2025.
I'll second Pat's reappointment.
All right, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Along the same lines, next one is a motion, I'll make a motion for reappointment of Carl Vienz, 8 Belvedere Road, to the Volunteer Fire Department Benevolent Association Board of Governors, for a two-year term to expire November 30th, 2025.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will make a motion for the reappointment of Maurice Farney, 77 Ellen Street, to the Fire Department, to, excuse me, to the Volunteer Fire Department Benevolent Association Board of Governors, for a two-year term to expire November 30th, 2025.
I'll second Maurice's reappointment.
All right, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll motion for the reappointment of Robert Baikowski, 99 Spring Road, as the Land Records Auditor, for a two-year term to expire November 30th, 2025.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Jeremy J. Baikowski, 175 Clintonville Road, as the Land Records Auditor, for a two-year term to expire November 30th, 2025.
I'll second Jeremy's reappointment.
All right, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll motion for the reappointment of Michael Maturro, 111 North Hill Road, as the Tree Warden, for a two-year term to expire December 31st, 2025.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Mark Genovese, 1322 Ridge Road, as the Department of Motor Vehicles Hearing Officer, for a two-year term to expire December 31st, 2025.
I'll, I'll second Mark's reappointment.
All right, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?